It's November fourteenth. I want to welcome everybody. Our first item of business is roll call and all other persons are present. Next item is pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Please stand. Okay, we're on to item four, reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held on October seventeenth, November second, November ninth. See attachments one, two, and three. What are your wishes? Now, we have a motion by Veneman to approve. Is there a second? And we have a second by Austin. Any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero days. We have a big agenda. We're on to item five. Keep her moving here. Considered for adoption and ordinance to allow all train vehicles and UTV, U-Train vehicles to operate on city streets, city streets other than state highways. See attachment four. I would assume that maybe... Go ahead, Ben.
I don't have a lot to say on the issue. I would like, I guess what I would like to say is I will make a motion to approve this, but I would like to add a sunset clause to this. So potentially March first of 2024 to expire in 25, and it can be rebuilt at that time. So that's my motion.
They go from March first, 2024 to March first of 2025. At that time, it'll be evaluated. Is there a second? We have a second by Austin. So I'm going to assume that there might be a person or two that wants to speak. Do we want to have the public speak at all? Or are we ready to just kind of get into a vote? Have we heard everything? Go ahead, Ms. Rehm.
Personally, Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. Personally, I think we, I've at least have heard enough here in the past that, I mean, if there's some discussion or something, maybe, but I guess I can, I could go without it. It's, we've had it five months or more even on this before and we've heard it. I don't know if there's something new that I don't know about. Might be something, but I don't know that we need discussion, other than the council. So.
Okay. Counsel, have any discussion? I guess I'm going to say something. I'll let Mr. Catton, I'll go first. You want? What's that?
No, I hit it and so it...
Are you good with Jake going?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, so we had received several emails about whether this could be... Well, let me back up a little. We had thought we were going to move this to a referendum status is what, how the last... And then we, and we had found out that the referendum was not, in fact, constitutional, I guess, to send, we didn't have the ability to send it to a referendum. Then we see, received several emails or communications saying that they thought we could and whether or not this was a charter ordinance or not. And I understand that it's not and that we can't, the, excuse me, that the council cannot send it to a referendum. It's, I'm still in favor of the entire city approving this ordinance. And so for me, I would, I'm going to vote no, just because I would prefer that we shut it down and it goes out. And if people wish to have, and, excuse me, if there's a growing public that wants to petition for a referendum, then they can go ahead and do so. But I, I will vote no on this, just because I, my, my belief is that it should be decided by the entire electorate. Thanks.
Go, Jake.
So I'll keep my stance. I've had the whole time that it should be a referendum. And I mentioned the last time that I would vote no, so that it would give citizens the opportunity to bring it to the direct legislation referendum, which requires circulation of signatures and then essentially you can bring it directly to the ballot. That, that is the way I believe this should go, is still via referendum. Unfortunately, that's the only way. So we had to rescind our actions to have it into a referendum vote that passed six-two. I'm not sure if anybody's started one yet, but the last time I had mentioned that this would be the best process to go. And if not, you know, if you haven't started, I would recommend you do and look into what's required of that, if, if you're looking to see it on the April ballot. I, again, think that's a great opportunity for the ATV, UTV clubs to go out and educate citizens, the way they've came in and educated us about their culture. But to get to the direct legislation referendum, we have to vote it down so that they can then circulate the papers and bring it on the ballot.
I'd like to recognize anybody who wants to speak, either in favor or against it.
Okay. I guess if somebody wants to speak, come on up, sir. We'll give you five minutes and, or three minutes and then, okay, sounds good.
And letting the people vote? I'm a convicted felon. I don't have the eligibility to go into this areas and vote and for mayor or anything else. I don't get that luxury. So I can't voice my opinion by signing a ballot and saying, hey, I get to do this. I'm locked out of that because of my decisions I made in my past 30 years ago. I'm still locked out of that to this day. That's not fair.
Thank you.
So how do I turn around, Jake, and I get to my vote out there then? Because my vote don't count now at this point in time.
It's not really, this isn't meant to be a dialogue.
Well, he's the one that made the comment, though. He is the one that made the comment, though, that to leave it to the community to vote on it, well, that's not fair, because I don't get that option to vote.
But these are opinions, so, and you're offered, the opportunity to come up is to offer your opinion and thoughts.
To anybody, I guess. Sorry for singling one person.
Oh, that's all right.
But to everybody, that, there's plenty of other, that people that I know that can't vote, that are still on probation and everything else, they don't get the right to vote, that want to see this pass. This whole thing of putting it up for a vote and everything else and letting the community vote, they don't get a word in it. It's not right. It's not fair. So try to figure something out, I guess is what I'm asking, to where this could be passed, because not everybody has that luxury of being able to go take this and vote towards it that want it to get passed, is, I guess, is what I'm saying, keeping an open mind about.
Sounds good. Thank you. Brian? I'm sorry, also, can you please state your name and your address, too?
Brian Marsh, 221 Two Mile Avenue. Yeah, and we really appreciate all the time you all have put in this, we really do. And I know it is a tough decision from a council standpoint, I understand that. But at the end of the day, you are elected officials and I do understand wanting to put it to the people to vote. But as elected officials, I don't understand where, why we're at, where we're at with all the information that's been provided, all the positives, the other locations that are open, the feedback, people coming up and talking directly about it. Again, almost every person that has come up and said something about this, this has been a positive, positive thing for their communities, for their locations. They've had little to no issues. That's the, across the board. And you will find very, very few things that say otherwise. And most of the people that are against it, again, with any of the data, any of the statistics, any of the information that are out there, 95% of it is completely wrong and has no relevance or no leg to stand on whatsoever. So I understand that portion of it, but being as Wisconsin Rapids resident, I'm calling to all of you to hopefully vote for this, because we need to do more things for our community. We're not doing the greatest. We have problems here. We don't have a huge, we don't have huge industry here. We have very little, people coming in for tourism. And this is something that is going to help, that portion of it especially going to help our small businesses, and they need it. We have a huge following of small businesses that are like, yes, we want this, because they know what it can bring to their communities. Again, it's almost $1.2 billion that it brings into the Wisconsin economy, estimated for this year. And that's something that we can help funnel some of those funds into our community that can do good things and can help people and help to grow other things. It's not just for this ATV and UTV community, but that money's going to help to fund and do a lot of other things around here. And again, for as little problems as there's been proven and shown time and time again through all the people that have stated and have had talk and information that's been given, I just don't know why we're still pushing this off to a referendum. I mean, I could see if there was a lot of problems. I could see if there's a lot of negative feedback and issues. I would totally understand that. I was even blown away by how little there was on that aspect. I thought there'd be at least, I thought there'd be at least a little more than what there was, for sure. And I was just amazed at how, how little I was able to come across. And I truly did try to find those bad negatives, because you have to be able to talk about those. You can't just pretend like it's all good and sunshine and rainbows. And that's not saying there isn't problems. There's little things here and there, but it's always been onesies twosies and it gets resolved relatively quickly. So again, I appreciate all of your, all of your time on this, but I'm asking you guys to, to take a chance on this. I love the sunset clause. I think that's great, because then if there's problems, it can go away and it's not a chance. But why won't we at least give it a shot? Give it a try. Let people try for this next season. It's, it's a low cost investment to get it going, but it's a huge potential return and something that's going to help everybody in the community and give people in the community something to do, an option, an opportunity. There's not a lot here to do. I'm a resident and I don't like living here for that one specific reason. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Let me, Ms. Rehm, do you want to speak now or do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Elizabeth. You could please state your name and, and your address, please?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Wayland. I live at 211 15th Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids. And I'm here, probably one of the few, that is actually, I was looking forward to the fact that there would be a referendum. My whole family, we were planning on voting in the referendum and I would like there to actually be a public referendum on this. I think that I've done some research and I, you know, I was on the DNR site. I have the 2022 Wisconsin Recreational Vehicle Safety Education Enforcement Report. And unfortunately, there's a lot of issues with compliance in the community with, and I think that those issues will get exacerbated by allowing UTVs and ATVs on the road. And I, I wanted to express our, you know, ability to be able to vote on that. There's, you know, 63% of fatal crash victims were not wearing a seatbelt at the time of the crash, it says here in 2022. A combined 52% of crashes occurred on public highways and road routes. Over 80 non-fatal crashes occurred on public highways in 2022. I mean, this is in the, you know, DNR's report. I don't see how, you know, they're tying, this is the, you know, 2023 off-highway vehicle fatal crash summary. A lot of these are, you know, showing that alcohol was involved, that, you know, helmet or seatbelts were not worn, were not used. That's going to be more of an issue for our police department, who already is, you know, doesn't need to be having more to do on their plates to be issuing citations to people that in general don't seem to be complying with the rules as they are on trail situations and, you know, and routes and stuff. So that's my two cents. So I appreciate your time and thank you for your, you know, considering to actually let it go to a referendum. So, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else? Could state your name and address, please?
Russ Brizella, 5928 Maine, Auburndale. Actually, I'm here representing two clubs. Of course, you all know Central Wisconsin ATV Club, right here out of Wood County, and I'm also, because I'm a member in Marathon County, the Eau Claire River Rats, or Eau Plain River Rats, excuse me, out of Stratford area. And in Auburndale area, we have over 100 members that would just love to come to your town or get through. And up in Marathon, they have like 150 members and they want to come down. And we're talking, you know, you're talking up in Stratford area, we want a way to come through. And right now, the only way we have to come through is through Nacusa. And I know we've talked to the people down in Nacusa. I've talked to some of the, as you say, higher-ups or whatever. They're just loving when we come through, because the extra revenue and everything that it brings in. I mean, it's, the Wisconsin River blocks awful lot. You all know that. There's no way to get across that, because it's mainly state roads that go across it. So, I mean, we're looking for another avenue to get across. So, I mean, we, we have to work on something. And I know even your mayor here, I seen you on TV, what was it, a couple of months ago? I don't know if it was Channel Seven or Channel Nine. You were talking tourism. And I'll be honest, I believe this city does need tourism. I know I am not area resident or anything like that there. I am from Auburndale Marshfield area. But if we want to come this far, I mean, to come to a meeting, we've been coming to meetings here for what, six months, just about seven months now? And I've been showing up for every one of them. So that shows you some of the dedication. And I know, and not to knock on this lady prior to me here, but I mean, most of us, you see the gray hair, both of our clubs that we're in, this is what most of us are like, we're a minimum of 50 years old. And that's why I say, join a club. We teach you what's going on. Most of these accidents, and I know I have proof of this, they are caused on trails with people that some do not even have their training for it. They get out there, they ride around, they give a hell, do whatever they have to and go from there. I mean, you look, see how many are actually in a town or anything or on regular trails? These guys are going out in the country on private property in their own areas. They're getting in wrecks, doing stuff. DNR has to come in or somebody has to come in. They blame it on that because insurance. And that's pretty much the reason for it. But I mean, we would love to be able to come through your town. The extra money that we could produce for you guys, I mean, like I say, we're talking just 200 members from two clubs. So we're trying to bring business in for you guys, you know? We appreciate it if you would open the roads and everything, you know? I guess, apparently, if you guys are not willing to do it, that's, that's up to you. You know, that's what you guys are here for. But I mean, we can find ways around it, because like I say, we'll just keep going through Nacusa and coming around, and they're just going to love us for it. So that's, that's up to you guys to do what you want to do. And I know you're looking for tourism right now and bringing a little bit more money. So, I mean, that's up to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anybody? Go ahead.
Oh, my name is Tom Muse, a resident of Wisconsin Rapids. I first want to start out that before I read what I've written down.
Your address?
541 Canal Street.
Okay, thank you.
Before I read what I've written down over the last few days, I first want to announce that I was able to speak with Senator Krug and Testin last, last week. I also seen that on the ATV, UTV site, both senators were praising the activities at an area UTV, ATV rounds. During the discussion with both senators, I was warned, if I want to have any kind of position within office, to not even bring up the ATVs, to not even take a side. That made me push even more to make this, this comment here to the board, or, excuse me, to the council. Good evening, Tom Muse, resident taxpayer. For the last year, I've been following along with the request legally open the streets to ATV use. Throughout that time, I've discussed this topic with multiple citizens and representatives. The response have been positive and negative towards the proposal. When individuals have been in support of it, the focus has been in favor of the attributes these measures would benefit the community, from the additional revenue it would provide and the additional liberties it would provide to the ATV enthusiast. Those that have opposed the street use focus on safety, traffic, noise, or nuisance issues that would cause. Knowing farewell of the risks associated with any mode of transportation on city streets, I am reminded that my life experience driving electric and gasoline-powered scooters for over 10 years delivering local newspapers. I am also reminded that my kids have, have been enjoyed by the neighbors while they ride electric and gasoline-powered ATVs on my yard and neighboring streets, as young as three years old. My personal actions of operating ATVs, scooters, mopeds, bikes, motorcycles, cars, trucks, airplanes, drones, tractors, and on occasion specially-built race cars during local parades and car cruises. Well, tonight, the vote could go either way. The public has shown up to the council in large numbers in favor of it. While those who have opposed it counted on calling in, those who show up at the person are willing to discuss the topic in open and to provide statistics proof of its benefits. My question for the council, how much longer are we going to alienate Wisconsin Rapids to some of the liberties the majority of Wisconsin is already enjoying? You may vote to act tonight, but no matter the outcome, eventually the streets will be opened. It's inevitable. You can pass the ordinance tonight and allow future administrations to change or modify it. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Go ahead, Ben. Is it, push the green button or the button?
Got it.
Okay.
My name is Madeline Pomquist. I'm at 1231 Cook Avenue. So I wanted to make a comment on the issues with compliance in UTVs and the 2022 report from the DNR. So that analyst, that does not adjust for communities that are open. So there are a number of tickets on that top 10 list, if you looked at it, that show ATV riders riding too close to a highway. So that shows all of open Wisconsin, not just roadways that are restricted. So in that instance, there could be people violating city ordinances when they wouldn't in, if we passed an ordinance like we're proposing. The other thing is that I've watched a number of the budget meetings and we talk a lot about bringing in new businesses, but there's very little talk on how much we're going to or what we're going to do to support our existing businesses. You've heard a lot tonight already about this potential ordinance bringing in businesses or bringing in revenue for our existing businesses. And based on the survey results I emailed to you all last night, that rings true. The supporting or the community members who are not outside of Wisconsin Rapids said they would support Wisconsin Rapids businesses more if we were open to UTV traffic. The last comment I wanted to make was in reference to the referendum. So Susan can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if it does go to referendum, it does not have to be the ordinance that you, you proposed. So we could take out things, take out the curfew, which was one of the comments on the survey, and then have the signatures and then pass it. And based on the survey results, 13% of the voting public completed that in about 24 hours when it was out. So it's clear that it will pass. It is just up to you on when and what is in the ordinance.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Otherwise, Ms. Rehm. Um, did you want? What's that? Oh, you still got the floor. Good point. Thank you.
I just had a question for Sue. If somebody is a convicted felon, can they sign a petition or are they not able to sign petitions?
It's my understanding that you have to be an eligible elector or voter in order to sign a, yeah, because it's actually part of the election process.
Thank you. And the last thing I'd like to call for a roll call, when this does go to vote.
We do a roll call vote by the push of the button? Yeah, I'm kind of confused. So you want everybody to vote verbally versus hitting the button and displaying?
Yeah, correct, the verbal.
Well, for record-keeping, I think we need to push the button and then we can do, if everybody wants, if you want people to verbally say their vote, would that work? Because it logs this, and then it's part of this.
I understand that.
Go ahead.
We can do a roll call vote verbally and then push a button after that, if that's what you want, right, Sue, or not? Well, I, I guess I would leave it up to the council of whether they want to do a vote differently than they generally do. I mean, generally, it's a simultaneous vote electronically versus the roll call vote. I guess what you want to see is who's voting for and against as it comes over to you?
No.
So I guess if that's, well, I, I mean, I'm not sure, I guess if the council unanimously wants to vote that way, I guess I think that would be okay. Otherwise, I think we're, we, this is the voting.
I'll withdraw my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Rehm, are you done? Okay, thank you. Ms. Rehm.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I think one way or the other, we're going to vote up or down. I wanted to do this, I think, three months ago or so to show where we were. The communications that I've had from residents have been against it.
Hold on, let him finish.
Thank you. And I think it's, is a responsibility of us as the elected officials to make that decision, up or down. And I was going to vote against it several months ago. And I'm going to vote against it this evening. As one person has already stated this evening and it has been said at other times, is that it could create more headaches for the, our PD. And I guess if this was approved, they're going to have to pay attention to that, just as they would, I think, automobiles. And I know that in there, I believe the time is to end at 10 o'clock. And I, other than, I guess it's nighttime, I don't know why that was picked out, because traffic still goes past that all night long. And if it has to do because of the dark, well, it was dark when a lot of people got here tonight. So I, to me, there's not a whole lot to say. And that's why I guess I started with that, I think that should be the council, unless there was something new, that the council could discuss that amongst ourselves tonight, because that's where we are now anyway. I just don't think it's a good thing for the city to have, to do, to enact. And I know there are those that don't like that, but at least what I, at least I have, I guess, the courage to speak up, one way or the other. I guess, the courage to speak up, one way or the other. And if constituents don't like that, they can, they have a recourse, too. But there's one thing that irritates me, though, is when something like that gets held over somebody's head to try to force a vote. We're elected here, eight of us, to make up our mind on many issues. And we got a big one yet tonight to come after this with the budget. There's a little, I think, as this started, to back up a little, as this first came forward, it became a, it was a pass-through convenience for the riders, to be able to get from one side of the river or town to the outside of town on the other side. Now, it may present, may involve tourism money and that. I'm not going to deny that, but that's not how this was first presented, as I took it And for city residents, their tourism dollars generally are going to other communities. And if tourism dollars is that, they're going to stop and buy stuff and that, that's one thing, I guess, but if it's going to be that, they're going to use that for the, how to make their rounds about town. To the drinking establishments and that, that is going to create more problems. And yes, I appreciate the people that have shown up. But I also know that I've had calls from city residents, including today, opposing And so that's why I intend to vote no. I believe these vehicles have a place, and there is a way to get them to where they want to go. And that's what I think we should still follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Katna.
I wanted to speak to the sunset clause in Jay's motion specifically, and any type of sunset clause that would have to do with ATV, UTVs, and a direct-to-legislation referendum that would be brought. I would be hesitant to have a sunset clause on something such as ATV, UTV traffic coming into town, just as to when the, when the sunset comes and there's a new council, and if by chance they choose to not renew the ordinance, you then have this confusion with residents and those outside of Wisconsin Rapids. And a lot, some of them mentioned they're from outside right now, that the ATV, UTV has ended, they're used to coming and driving through, and then they come to town and all of a sudden, they're not supposed to be here anymore. So I would be hesitant, even if you do direct legislation, that you put sunset on there. And as Madeline mentioned, you can choose what ordinance you want to bring on a direct-to-legislation, but I would encourage, if that's the route you're going to go, you want to make it the most viable to pass. So whatever's going to win over the most people. So that would be my, my recommendation. And if we do go this route, I wouldn't want to see a sunset clause and then confusion later down the road on ATV, UTVs.
Thank you, Jake. I guess I don't get a vote unless it's a tie, so, but, you know, every one of us sitting here, well, every councilperson sitting here, your districts are about 2,000 people. Now, think about how many people elect you into your district, 100, 200? So realistically, if we take this to a referendum, do you think the majority of the city is going to show up? I know I didn't win by 50% of the electors coming out and showing up to vote, so, and I know none of you guys have. So going to referendum isn't really a true tell of whether or not the community wants it, it's just whoever shows up to vote at that time. You know, we sit here and we talk about Wisconsin Rapids. We look at our, this year, what, our net new construction allowed us to raise our tax, tax base $42,000. It does even cover probably the fuel it's going to cost to run in our equipment. So if we continue to do what we're doing, that gap is going to keep closing, that if we're not going to try to do something different in this community, I think we're in trouble. We definitely are in trouble, because we are not growing, and we have to come up with some other things. And, thank you. Hold on. I don't know, I'm just frustrated, you know, and the sunset clause, I disagree, Jake. If we yank this in a year from now, they're all going to know, because we're the one that, that ended it. And I think, I sit here, and I'll tell you, at the beginning, I think, I thought you guys were crazy. I'm thinking, Wisconsin Rapids, the size of Wisconsin Rapids, we're going to let ATVs run through our community? And then I learned Marshfield did it. And I started listening, and I started looking at all the other things that are on the roadway. And if I had a UTV and I needed to go somewhere and I ended up taking my UTV, well, it'd be in my UTV or my car, or my truck. And so it's going to be one or the other. I'm going to travel through. And so it's not like, you know, all of a sudden, there's more people on the roadway except for the travelers. And I just, I'm just frustrated that, you know, we need to do things differently in this community if we want to have different results in this community. And the sunset's the way to go, because, like I said, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I support it, and if I get the opportunity to vote, I'm going to vote in favor of it, because the people that are speaking against it, they don't have a crystal ball either. The only way we're going to know if this works is if we try it. And if it is a bad thing, then it just goes away. At least we tried it. I mean, if it's a good thing, then the council at that time, I won't be here, can vote in favor and, and, and put it on the books. So that's just my two cents. Thank you. Thank you. That's all right. My last big speech. But anybody else? Oh, Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I can't agree more with your statement, particularly sunset to sunset. I think a lot of, or most of the hesitance as far as safety issues are concerned were based off of turn signals or signaling in general. So sunset to sunset, you know, ensures there's daylight when folks are, are making those turns and can be seen, right? So.
The sun, sunset's referred to as, it's on the books for a year, and then it'll automatically die after a year, or council at that time needs to vote that make it permanent. So it's kind of like a trial period.
Okay. I misunderstood that.
But, yeah, no.
All right. Well, sorry for that. But I will say, you can cherry pick all the data that you want, right? The trend is that community after community is opening up for ATV use, and that trend is going to continue. And that's how I'm going to vote, and I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Ready to, ready for a vote and get on to the rest of the meeting? You guys, you want to recognize? Okay, come on in, or come on up. If you could state your name and address, please, sir. I do that.
My name is Zach Hobick. I'm at 1840 Shamrock Lane in Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin. Here, it's right on the border of Grand Rapids and Wisconsin Rapids. Firstly, I'd like to thank Brian Marsh and the clubs for all the hard work that they've done, the research they've done, and the time that they spent spreading positivity and educating the public on this subject, including yourselves. I would also like to thank Jake, as I think it's an honorable mention to lean towards a referendum so that everybody can get their voice heard, however, as Shane did describe, how many people are actually going to show up to that. And I think what we see here speaks volumes as to how many people do support it. The people, I've only shown up to two of these meetings, that's what I was aware of, that's what I showed up to. But I know a lot of these guys and gals out here have shown up to every meeting, and that should speak volumes to the people that elected you into office. I'm a Wisconsin Rapids native. I have lived here 33 years. I'm a business owner of two small businesses, home-based businesses, retailing and selling firearms, as well as teaching firearm safety. I've seen things every day on social media as far as this town and this city dying. We've all heard that, we've all read that, we've all seen it since before the mill even closed down. And I've had family that still works in the mills and that has worked in mills all their lives. We still hear this, and it's unfortunate, also that it's a retirement home community. I hate hearing that. I'm probably one of the three youngest people sitting in this crowd back here, right? No offense, no offense. I would absolutely hate to see our little city, and trust me, I love, I love Wisconsin Dells. I've visited there since I was very young, but I would hate to see our little city turn into Wisconsin Dells. However, we'd be foolish, absolutely foolish, each and every one of you, not to see the benefits of the capital that would come to this small city of ours, with the benefits of tourism and whatnot, individuals driving through, going, going to bars, going to restaurants, going shopping down in downtown. There's very, very little to do for people my age. And my wife is slightly younger than me, and again, very, very little for us to do in this community. We've talked numerous times about moving. The biggest thing holding us here is family. We've talked numerous times about moving to bigger, slightly bigger cities, areas where there's more land, more to do, et cetera. We have two small kids of our own. Will this please everyone? You know, kind of, Tom, I believe his name was, to Tom's point of view, will this please everyone? You guys are all in government, you absolutely know for sure, nothing you do is going to please everyone, right? I mean, that's common in government. Will it please the vast majority? And that's what you should be asking yourselves. I would 100% guarantee this is going to please the vast majority. Look at all the communities around us, Marshfield, Tamahawk, Monocwa, Eagle River, I mean, it goes on and on and on, that places are going more and more towards this. I encourage you, and this is what I was just saying, that if you haven't visited places such as Monocwa, Tamahawk, Eagle River, and seen the positivity with the UTVs and the ATVs, and mind you, this, if, if you're worried about the ATV versus UTV, the vast majority of people, including myself, as young as I am, do have the UTVs, which are, I'm a safety manager, is my profession, so safety is paramount to me. The vast majority of these things that are operating on public roads are going to be UTVs versus ATVs, and they are plenty more safer than the ATVs that we're going to see very infrequently anyway.
Could you wrap up?
Yep. So in, in conclusion, again, I have two young kids myself who absolutely love riding. This is a great family activity for us and many other families and generations to come.
Thank you, sir. Okay. You guys ready to vote? All right. So the motion is to pass the ordinance with a sunset of one year, March 1st, March 1st, 24, 23, 24 to that. Okay. All right, please cast your ballots. That motion failed. Two A's, six nays. Right, there you guys go. You guys want to sneak out now is probably the time, unless you want to hang out for the rest of the meeting?
I hate it like that. I knew it would be locked. All right, take care.
Okay. For the more exciting things, we'll move on to item six is consider for adoption a resolution adopting the tax levy in the 2024 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. See, attachment five? Do you have any? Tim, do you have any words of?
Jerry, I handed out the, the resolution, because we got the final number for, for the county levy this afternoon. So that was included in that, and then that changed some of the tax increment in the budget. And so those numbers were adjusted, the mass transit, as I discussed at the last meeting, was, was adjusted. So the budget documented here dated November 14th is the final budget for, for consideration. And that's basically all I have at this point.
Anyone have any questions for a motion? Uh, Mr. Katna.
I'll be quick. Obviously, this has been well debated. We've had several meetings on it, but in, in my opinion of how the budget process should work, is that if we disagree with one thing in the budget, it should be a no vote, and we should work through that process until there's negotiations to get enough yes votes. I'm obviously disappointed with how this year went. Everything that was submitted for in the departmental budgets was approved. I feel as if the time we spent going through those, well, majority of it, what was? The shed? Oh, I thought you were saying everything was. But the majority, every, the departmental budgets were submitted, we spent time going through them, and we didn't really change anything, and it passed 6-2. So it's almost as if all that time spent, I, I don't know what we were doing. So going forward, I would just like to see council more cognitive of spending throughout the year at the committee level. I don't think it should come to the end of the year and spending that happened or was decided upon throughout the year is all of a sudden under fire and we're trying to figure out how to balance. I think it can be worked through, and I think when we get to budget time, nobody should be afraid to vote it down and get into more negotiation, rather than you have to accept what was submitted by departments, or you don't. It shouldn't be one or the other.
I guess that was my argument before every budget meeting, was this is a time to make motions and changes, and there weren't, weren't a lot of motions being made, you know, and this is where we ended up. Any other, all right, we don't, we don't have a motion yet, so what are your wishes? Uh, Mr. Remke?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tax levy in the 2024 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Zachary.
Are the, are the flat cameras right now in the budget? Like, we pass this as is, so?
Correct. Maybe the, oh, sorry. Maybe the police chief can give you some thoughts, because we've talked about, you know, the cameras would come back to finance, and there would be discussion, and there'd be discussion around a policy, and at that time, you could take it up, you would be taking it up again.
So them being in the budget right now, when we vote on it, what are we voting on with the flat cameras?
It's in the budget.
It's just, so the money is in the budget for the flat cameras?
Correct. But then the bids and the things will come back to finance.
And at finance, we can say we don't want to give the money that we gave in the budget to the flat cameras?
If there's a greater discussion and that's a motion, yes.
Okay. I just want to have a chance, so.
Yep. And, and we've also talked about making sure that, you know, there are clear policy, and he was going to bring that forward also. If you have anything to say, I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, just, just because you can pass it today doesn't mean this is a done deal. You know, I've had some discussions with other council members, and, yeah, I've got no, I've got no issue with, I've got no issue with having a greater discussion on the policies and how these, how this is implemented, and any other, you know, input that, that's desired with that before we move forward with it.
I appreciate that, and I've talked to a lot of people about it, so it's not that I'm-
I've got no issue with having a greater discussion on the policies and how this is implemented, and any other, you know, input that's desired with that before we move forward with it.
I appreciate that, and I've talked to a lot of people about it, so it's not that I'm set one way or the other, but to be able to have further conversations about it is a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's, two nays. We are on to item seven, which is consider for the adoption of a resolution setting the equivalent residential union, unit, ERU, charged for stormwater management utility improvement funds, see attachment six. Mr. Canna? Oh, you make a motion to, if you want a motion to approve? I'm just confirming. Okay. So, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Veneman. Any discussion needed? Yeah, Tim, if you could explain maybe, what's that? Oh, you wanted to say, okay, yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
So, I made these motions when we were going through the committee of the whole meetings for the budget, and the reasoning behind it is that these utilities were created to support specific purposes such as wastewater or stormwater, and the next one coming up is transportation utility. Without updating them every year, they fall behind what they were created for. And so, going forward, I really think it should be a yearly conversation to make sure that they are fulfilling what they were created for. And that's why we're doing it this year. I think we missed out last year, and there's no way to catch up on that, but something to keep in mind going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, a motion and a second to approve, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. For an item eight, consider for adoption a resolution setting the transportation utility fee base trip, or base fee and trip fee for the Transportation Utility District, TUD, fund, see chapter, or see attachment seven. What are your wishes? Motion to approve? Jake?
Yeah.
Just confirming for our clerk. And we have a second by Mr. Zacher. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried eight A's, zero nays. We have item nine, consider for the adoption and ordinance amending portions of section eight sewage regulation regarding limitations on mercury discharge. The ordinance was recommended for adoption by the Wastewater Treatment Commission at its meeting October 11th, 2023. And Mr. Budzberg is here also. We would have some knowledge if you have any questions on mercury. Mr. Canna?
Derek, could you just give a quick overview of?
Yes, so, the Wisconsin Rapids Wastewater Treatment Plant has a mercury pollution prevention program that we are required to do by the DNR slash EPA. Some of those steps are education and sampling and prevention to try to reduce mercury in our sewer system. So, it's a program that's been going on for several years, well over 10 years. And every, every five years, we kind of have to go through it again and revamp it, prove other ways of how we can reduce mercury into our system. So, I was looking at the ordinance, and we're looking at some of our numbers coming into the plant. And we actually had a value that was flagged by the DNR at one point. And I talked to them about it, and we did some more sampling to try to figure out where it came from. And one of the things I realized was it got flagged by the DNR, but it didn't even surpass what our ordinance was. So, technically, we couldn't even do anything about it, anyway. And that was another thing, too, where the, when the DNR was looking at this program, they realized, they said, well, why is our, why is our mercury limit set so high? And I really didn't know. So, I started looking into it, looked at what other communities are doing, and found out that we were very high compared to like Fond du Lac, Wassa, and Wapaka. Or, I don't know, maybe at one point, being that it was in milligrams per liter, it was maybe supposed to be in nanograms per liter, and it was just left that way for a long time. But after, after looking at it and figuring out what other communities have their ordinance at, that's why we set it at 0.0002 milligrams per liter.
To allude any confusion, so the wastewater treatment plant, you'd assume most of that mercury is coming from industrial use, or?
It can be. So, one of the big places where mercury can be is in a dental office where people had mercury fillings. Those are starting to be phased out, but they do have amalgam separators that make sure that that mercury is not going down the sewer. That's also part of our program where we follow up with dental offices and make sure that they're performing maintenance on those separators as needed. Other things could be like mercury thermometers, fluorescent bulbs, all have that, which would be hard for that to get down the sewer. But it's possible if lights are being broken, instead of being swept up, they're being washed down the drain or something like that could be a reason. And industries, if they're using cleaners that aren't very pure, they can, there can be trace mercury in those cleaners as well.
Thank you. And so, we were only flagged by the DNR one time, otherwise?
Yeah, and I shouldn't even really say flagged. It kind of just, it drew their curiosity as to why, why it was high. We have been doing, we've really ramped up our sampling in the last year, once we started this, this new five-year program, trying to narrow it down. We haven't really had any, we can't really pinpoint anything yet. We've been trying to narrow it down to certain lift stations. But then when we test, then they'll be fine, and they're only grab samples, and it's a pretty expensive test, so. And we only have one composite sampler, so. We've been testing. We've been kind of going above and beyond at that point of our sampling, but starting with the ordinance would be a big thing because then when we say we did specifically find a business or something, we can actually do something about it to get those numbers down lower.
And so, the ordinance would, this isn't the treatment plant overall exceeding and then going and punishing one business? So, you would be able to go see their direct levels, or how would we enforce the ordinance?
Yeah, hopefully. I've never actually had to enforce any mercury ordinance, but that would be the same as, you know, not maintaining a grease trap or something like that. We would have to get the plumbing inspector involved.
Okay, motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion by Canna to approve. And thank you, Mr. Veneman, for a second, and Mr. Delaney.
I just had some questions on, you said you looked at other people's or other communities, what they have for their limit. Is, is this an average of that? Is this the exact what everybody has?
This is probably right in the middle of all of those. It would be this, it'd be the same as Fond du Lac, a little bit lower than Wassa by, by like, it'd be 0.004 difference of Wassa's. And it's quite a bit higher than Wapaka's. Wapaka had the lowest ordinance that I found. They actually, I read into that a little bit. They had some stuff online. So, a normal effluent discharge limit is 1.3 nanograms per liter. They actually set their ordinance to that, 1.3 nanograms per liter. The problem with that is every time we sample, we would be over that because just in samples in general, the non-cleanliness, everything about it would put you over that all the time. So, you don't want to be running into that point where your, your ordinance is, you're basically, everybody's violating the ordinance every single day, so you wouldn't want that. You have to kind of look at it as what's coming in versus what's going out. And we are noticing that our trends for our effluent mercury are going lower and lower. And that's part of that program is to kind of go through that progression and show that your, your discharge limits are being, or your discharges are being lower and lower. So, right now, our variance is 5.6 nanograms per liter. In our next permit cycle, it's going to be going to 2.8 nanograms per liter. But the ultimate goal is to get to the 1.3 nanograms per liter. If we got to that point, we could eliminate this entire program, and I wouldn't have to run this anymore as long as we were actually meeting that 1.3. So, that's ultimately what they're trying to get you to do is we do the steps to prevent the mercury from getting into the system to keep our discharge limits low, and eventually, we're, you know, cleaning, keeping mercury out of the system, keeping mercury out of the environment by our preventative actions versus trying to, you can't really treat it at the plant.
So, the city towers, they have their, the water towers. Do you test that, anything, before it gets into the system at all?
Oh, the water towers themselves? I would have to ask Adam Bruneig about that. I'm sure they probably have some kind of testing they would do once a year for mercury, but we don't specifically test them.
Okay, because I'd like to know kind of what that is. Is that the 1.3 that you were talking about?
I would, I would imagine theirs is extremely low. I mean, there, I'm sure there is some kind of mercury limit. There's a lot of heavy metal limits that the water department would have, and they're obviously meeting them. Otherwise, it would be in the media, for sure, so.
I'm not against this. I just don't know enough about it to put a restriction such as this on, so I'm just going to vote no. I'm sure there's going to be seven other yeses, though, so, thanks.
That's fine. Just a little bit to go with that, too. I look at our normal influent numbers, and I would say they're normally around like 30 to 50 nanograms per liter is a common residential. So, setting it to 200 is, you know, it's high enough to where it should be raising some, some red flags of why is it that high? Because a normal residential user shouldn't have that.
Thank you. Derek, do you guys directly test leachate? Because I would think, you know, with mercury light bulbs and things ending up in the landfill.
So, we do test the landfill as well, and their numbers are probably more elevated than any of the residential areas we have, but they are just slightly below that 200 nanograms per liter.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Austin?
Yeah, Derek, are there any users that you would think would have an issue conforming to this ordinance?
The landfill would probably be one that could have an issue, but given that their history of what we've tested so far, I don't see why, being that they're cooperative, or they're in compliance with this new limit. We've tested our other big industries, and they've had numbers less than residential, which we would imagine being food-grade things, so. There's probably, there could be some other small businesses, but we haven't narrowed it down that far yet.
All right. Seeing no other questions, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried seven A's, one Nay. All right, finally, on to item 10 is the second reading of an ordinance, providing that an ordinance may be adopted at its first reading. See attachment nine. I think this is the fourth month we've seen this to get to this. Yep, it was changed, yep. Oh, Mr. Canna? Is this a motion to approve?
Yeah, but it doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it.
No, that's fine.
I would have liked to have seen this go through as originally presented, but I realize that doesn't have the support. I would just like to go over again. So, essentially, we're voting on an ordinance, then we're getting the paperwork on it, voting again, so we're still voting twice. What was the change that Patrick made?
Not by Ken anymore, or Attorney Shelkert.
Yeah.
I believe the change was to, to make clear that if an ordinance comes at its first reading, the first time it's in written form and before the council, that if a change is made to that ordinance, and I don't really know what, is that a material change or any change? But if any, basically says if any change is made, then that's really a new ordinance, so then that has to come back the second time. So, everything still might only require one reading, but that's only if you're not going to make any modifications to it all on the floor during its first reading. Is that what you're?
Okay, well, I still think this is a step in the right direction for all the reasons I've said before, getting us moving in a quicker motion to change and adopt new ordinances that a decision's made. I don't know why it always has to come back. As Tom mentioned earlier, we're elected to make decisions and decide on those things, and we should be ready to do that when the time comes. So, why there needs to be a month to change votes, I don't understand. I'm glad to see us moving towards something different.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Anything further? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried one, or seven A's, one Nay? All right, I think that's a good change. All right, we're on to item 11, consider the appointment of two regular members to the ethics board for a term expiring November 1st, 2026. This item was held over last month, from last month, and since then, we also had, you probably, you received an email that Mr. Penscover has withdrawn his request, and so now you have two people. Yes, yep, we have to nominate them. I don't know if you want, yeah.
Can I nominate two people?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to nominate Fran Bailey-Golkey as well as Mike Deary.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. I guess looking for unanimous consent to close nominations and cast the ballot for the two nominated individuals. I think they're both November 1st, 2026. What's that? Yeah, is anybody opposed? You are? Okay. Okay, nominations are closed. And then looking for a motion, then, to, thank you, to appoint the two people that have been nominated. Mr. Veneman's making a motion to approve the two people nominated?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to make that approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one Nay. Congratulations. The clerk's office will be in contact, or, or, does Emily make contact? I can't remember. Thank you. Yeah. Just, uh, they're both here, so they're confirmed and we have their contact information. So we'll, uh, just watch for a meeting agenda twice a year. Okay, we're on to item 12. Consider the adoption, the action of the plan commission, planning commission at its meeting held on November 2nd. Uh, Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The plan commission met, uh, at 4:00 PM on November 6th. A quorum of members was present. A list of others in attendance is available in our office in the clerk's department. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one was approval of the reports of the October 2nd and October 18th plan commission meeting. There was a motion by Austin to approve the reports. Second by Gudrow, that motion carried seven zero. Item two was a request from QuickTrip for site plan review to construct a facade improvement, commercial building addition and associated site improvements at 2520 West Grand Avenue. Staff provided a background, uh, and summary of the staff memo. Commissioner Gudrow asked some questions about the truck flow path to which the applicant replied. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve the request, subject to five conditions outlined in the staff report. Second by Blazer, that motion carried seven zero. Item three was a request by Dennis Eron for site plan and architectural review to construct a commercial building addition and associated site improvements at 710 Ruby Avenue. Again, staff provided a summary of the request. There was a motion made by Austin to approve the site plan and architectural review at 710 Ruby Avenue, subject to six conditions outlined in the staff report. There's a second by Maroots, that motion carried seven zero. Item four was a request from Metcalf Lumber for site plan and architectural review to construct an accessory building at 750 West Grand Avenue. The item was summarized by staff. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request, subject to three conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a second by Austin, that motion carried seven zero. Item five was adjournment. There was a motion by Kubisak to adjourn the meeting, second by Tao, motion carried seven zero. And the meeting was adjourned at 4:14 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kearns, uh, what are your wishes? Mr. Austin?
Motion to approve the report of the planning commission.
Thank you. And we have a second by Mr. Venomans. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item 13. Consider for adoption the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Uh, A is finance and property committee meeting held on November 7th, 2023. Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance and property committee meeting Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. All members of the finance and property committee were present. Item one, meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Item two, consider for approval a temporary retail class B fermented malt beverages license for assumption Catholic schools at 445 Chestnut Street for a barn dance event to be held on Saturday, November 18th, 2023 from 5:30 to 9 o'clock PM. It was moved by Venomans, seconded by Bemke to approve, motion carried three to zero. Item three, request from the community development department to apply for a 2024 certified local government grant to conduct a citywide historic property survey update. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve, motion carried three to zero. Item four, out of the bills, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venomans to approve, check number 18924 to check number 19375, motion carried three to zero. Item five, set next meeting date. Next meeting date was set for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 at 4:00 PM in the council chambers. Item six, adjournment, it's moved by Venomans, seconded by Zachar to adjourn, motion carried three to zero. The meeting ended at 4:05 PM.
Wow. That is. Uh, Mr. Bemke, is that a motion to approve? Alright, is there a second? And we have a second by Mr. Venomans. Any further? Any? Oh, Mr. Catna.
Kyle, can you speak a little bit about the historic property survey? I've, I've been contacted and people are curious as to if they own one of these homes, what impact it will have on their property? If it is going to give them any restrictions on what they can do, uh, what might come out of this survey?
So the, uh, the survey is in response to the recent changes in the designation as a CLG community by the, um, state historic preservation office. Uh, the reason we made those changes to our historic preservation ordinance is to eventually conduct a survey, a citywide survey that will identify all of our historic resources that could be eligible for nomination on the state and national historic register. If, um, if the survey's done and we receive the grant, uh, there is no match, by the way, for the grant. Um, we would then conduct the survey. That would take anywhere from 10 to 12 months and it would identify those resources. If those resources create a district, which, uh, the survey from the nineties did identify a few different historic districts, uh, we can then nominate those districts to the National Register of Historic Places, which would open the door for those property owners to access tax credits if they're going to, uh, historically improve their property. Um, it would not pre- preclude them from replacing their historic vinyl shakes to, or I'm sorry, their historic wooden shakes to, uh, vinyl siding. They could still do that, but then they could not access those tax credits for then improvement project. So the intent again is to nominate, um, districts to the National Register of Historic Places, um, to, uh, to allow the property owners access to those tax credits. I think historic districts can also help build sense of place. Um, I think we can get creative with regards to street lighting and signage and things of that nature and hopefully help some of our citizens take pride in these districts. And a lot of times you'll see in different communities where that happens, uh, people are more willing to invest in their homes and prove in their homes because they take pride in that historic homeownership and then you see values increase as well. So I think there are a few benefits, um, but there aren't really any negatives, uh, to being listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which is the ultimate goal for these districts.
And it's voluntary to participate in this program?
Correct. If you're in a, if, if a district gets nominated, you don't have to take access, uh, to the tax credit program. You can continue to develop your property as you see fit without any restriction.
So if you own a historic property, but you chose to make it modern, you would not be subject to anything that the historic preservation committee brings forward?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other requests, please cast your ballots. The motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item B, public works committee meeting held November 9th. Uh, Mr. Rayo?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met on Thursday, November 9th, 2023 in the council chambers at City Hall. All members were present. Others attending are in file. Uh, item one was called a meeting orders, called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report. The reports were reviewed. Item three, consider a request to allow residential properties additional garbage bins for an additional fee. No motion was taken. However, the committee directed staff to contact the DOA to review their interpretation of fees for additional garbage bins and to add this item to the referral list. Item four, consider setting degradation fee rates for the 2024 calendar year. There's a motion, uh, and a second to approve the degradation fee schedule for 2024 as presented. Item five, review and consider approving a relocation order for real estate as part of the 2024 Lincoln Street project between East River View, East, East River View Expressway and just north of Chestnut Street. There's a motion and a second to approve the relocation order and transportation project plat 2022 Ash 14 for Lincoln Street. That motion carried three to zero. Items, uh, six, review and consider changes to engineering department's change order policy. This item was reviewed and no action was taken. Item seven, review the DOT's local road improvement program applications for the 2024 to 2025 program cycle. The projects and applications were reviewed. Item eight, review the referral list. Remove item three on the truck parking and add item on fees for additional garbage bins. Item nine, set next meeting date. The next regularly scheduled meeting is set for Thursday, December 7th at 5:00 PM. And item 10 was to adjourn. There was a motion and a second to adjourn at 5:41 PM. That motion carried three to zero. And with that, Your Honor, I'd move for adoption of the report.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Rayo. Is there a second? Any other further discussion? Alright, seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item C is human resource committee meeting held on November 7th. Uh, Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the human resource committee met on Tuesday, number, some, November 7th at 5:30 PM. All, all other persons were present and Alderman Pollock and HR manager Hartman were also in attendance. Item one called to attend, called to order, um, meeting was called to order at 5:34 PM. Item two, consider for approval adjustments to the city's health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan to address the increased deductibles needed for the high deductible health plans pursuant to the IRS regulations, along with the corresponding reductions in premiums, all effective January 1st, 2024. See the attachment which outlines the new deductibles premiums and out of pocket maxims as proposed. Um, motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney to approve the adjustments to the city's health insurance with Aspiris Plan to address the increased deductibles needed for the high deductible health plans pursuant to IRS regulations, along with a corresponding reduction in premiums, all effective January 1st, 2024. Motion carried three zero. Item number three, consider for approval revisions to the seasonal coordinator position with the Parks and Recreation Department to add limited hours during the fall and winter. This position shall not exceed 1,040 hours in a rolling 12-month period. Um, discussion took place. Information was not available regarding the budget for the increased hours, so the item will be forwarded to council without a recommendation, but additional information will be provided. Item four, adjournment, motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney to adjourn, motion carried three zero, meeting adjourned at 5:44, 5:45 PM. And with that, I'll submit for approval and hold out withholding out item three.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, holding out item three, seconded by Delaney. Uh, any questions or comments on the balance of the report? Alright, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Okay, that motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Uh, Mr. Bemke regarding item three?
Um, I guess in, in my opinion, this was nothing more than a title change. The money had been budgeted. This was nothing more than a title change. And Jake is with us this evening, so maybe Jake could go through an explanation for us for the request, please?
Yeah, um, I really think it's even would be a, considered a title change. We are just asking if our seasonal rec coordinator could help us out during the winter months, during Christmas, when our rec supervisor was, um, on vacation. So she would be in the office answering the phone, uh, selling season passes for the aquatic center, cause we do run a special during that time of year. Um, so that was pretty much just office covered. And we did budget at $14,858 for this position. Um, currently she's sitting at $7,947. So, um, so there was plenty of, uh, money left in the budget for this position and to cover those hours.
You good, Mr. Bemke? Okay, Mr. Catna?
I'm gonna start off by making a motion to approve the seasonal coordinator position to add limited hours in the fall and winter. This was a, position shall not exceed 650 hours is the motion. And I'll speak to a, a little bit about that. That's the correct number, right Jake?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So when we took this up at, um, HR, this is a position that exists and the request was to move it up to 1040, but we didn't know exactly what this person was gonna do. So I spoke with Jake afterwards and he actually gave us specific dates that this person will be filling in. So it's not necessary to bring him up to the, the 1040 at this time, but the 650 would provide the additional help they're looking for over there. Uh, just adding an additional, I think 60 hours it is to that, what that person already does. So this takes care of it without having to go up to the 1040. They probably wouldn't have worked that anyways, but this just puts it on the books correctly as far as what they'll be working and if there's any changes next year or the year after, it would come back.
Mr. Bemke?
Sorry.
Uh, yes, two years ago. And then also, um, if this seasonal rec coordinator wasn't able to work those hours, we would still have clerical relief in the, in the office regardless. So someone still would be, still would be in that, uh, position.
I guess the question is if we reduce these hours and they go over by an hour, are they gonna have to come back to council every single time for an hour? Ryan, maybe that's, uh?
Well, I guess I would, with all other seasonal positions, so your, your summer help at the garage over the course of the summer, those are all, they, they could work up to 1,040 hours and we don't come here for the, those are what they're approved for. So when they work all summer, um, if they were to go beyond that, um, so that 1,040 is, is the threshold. Actually, we use 1,000 to keep them under, um, for the seasonal positions and they're budgeted for. Um, so the, the, the agenda topic was more of a, since they're considered, considered seasonal, excuse me, that's more of a April through August or September 1st? Uh, it was just basically go outside of that scope of the, to, to include the fall and winter hours. So, um, I guess my opinion is the 1,040, um, isn't really the, the point of discussion, cause that was already budgeted for already and that individual could have worked 1,040 hours prior to August 31st and it never would have come here. So to Jay's question of, if I work 656 hours, would you have to come back for approval? I, I don't know if we wanna, you know, go down that path or, or not.
I guess then maybe that's a question for Tim or Sue. If, if we go over those hours by, do we have to come back? Does it have to come back to council to be approved again?
Well, the 1040 is all about our WRS, um, you know, when someone goes over 1040 in a rolling 12-month period, then we have, then we're paying WRS, they're paying WRS, it's the retirement system. So that's, that's what that's about. And I think it's just to make, that was maybe put in there just to make sure that, you know, that person was not gonna be WRS benefits eligible. I guess the original seasonal coordinator position, I think was, I mean, I think there were limits on hours cause it was just set to be, to work from a certain period of time from September to, I'm sorry, from May through September. Is that May through August?
Yep.
Um, and now that the request was to kind of work outside of that more kind of year round, although not in a lot of additional hours, I, it was suggested to come back to make sure, you know, that that would be okay and that person could fill in, in times other than that were in the job description regarding the, you know, being in the summer, basically. Um, I guess I, I mean, I, I think whatever the budget is for that position, um, it's based upon how many hours they anticipate this person is gonna work. So I'm not sure what's in the budget for that position. Tim is, that maybe Tim can finish this.
Right, in the 2024 budget, 875 hours are budgeted for that position.
What was your motion Jake?
650. Once you seconded it, it's, it's seconded.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, you got more to say? Are you good?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, this was, this was just specifically Jake. Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, this was, this was just specifically, Jake provided the days, December 1st, 27th, 28th, 29th, and then I told him to add a buffer in case they have or work additional days. And to me, it just made sense that rather than approve these positions at 1,040, that gets budgeted for, and that shows, and in the whole budget, we might as well budget them or adjust the position, and it can be budgeted at the hours that they're actually gonna work, which Jake has provided. So, 650 adds those days in and provides a buffer. I'm not sure how much of a buffer was added. What was the, how many extra days did you add, just in case?
I think it was an extra two weeks.
Yeah, so he added extra time on there, and then with this position, as he mentioned, that clerical relief steps in, it's, it's just really important. He explained to me during those holiday hours when we're selling Aquatic Center passes and, and this particular person is using the system that Parks and Rec does, that there's someone there that understands how to navigate that.
Mr. Raum?
Thank you. Tim, you said 870 is what's in the budget?
875.
875? I'm content that we leave it at that, I guess. That's what's there. Okay, well, what's the motion, then?
650 hours.
Well, I, I understand, I guess that maybe is all he needs, but in the budget, it's 855. So, why, why are we? Well, then next year can be budgeted less. The bud, the budget is there for 855.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor for the 850, or 650. Historically, though, a little background, we've always used, usually had two relief clerical at the city, and they worked up to that 1,000 hours. And we have currently one relief clerical that could be utilized. However, she's heavily utilized in, in elections and also at tax season, so she kind of burns through most of those hours. And we had never gotten around to replacing the other person, so, you know, the person at Park and Rec, she has very specific knowledge and training in her, and so, but she's basically acting as a relief there and nowhere else, but, just a little background information. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to cap it at 650 hours, and there's been a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Okay, that motion passed, six As, two Nays. We are on to item 14. Reports of other committees, commission boards, and department reports. You can read for your reading pleasure. Referrals to committees. Any adjournment? Oh, hold on, before we adjourn, I just want to, I wish everyone happy Thanksgiving and happy safe hunting season. I plan to disappear for the next nine days, so if you don't see me after that, then come looking. All right, entertain a motion. So, we have a motion by, while we got Bemke, we can, motion by, seconded by Raum. Please cast your ballots. Yeah, motion carried eight As, zero Nays.